I'd like to call to order the May 13th meeting of the Newport Beach City Council for the study session. Could we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Curry is currently absent, but he is on his way.
Thank you. We will move right into current business with SS1. Does anybody have any questions they would like to ask or clarifications on the consent calendar? Gardner?
None.
Petros?
Nope.
Salage?
Nope.
None.
Leslie?
I have a couple.
Oh, my. Please proceed.
Item number four of the Corona Del Mar bid item. I just want to be clear. Staff is suggesting that there be 61,000 in addition.
Mike, I'm going to pull this for this evening.
Okay. All right. Are you going to pull number five, too, the restaurant bid? Okay. Are you just trying to shut me up?
Yeah.
I did want to just make a comment. In terms of the July 4th committee sunset, I wanted to make sure the record reflected I am supporting that proposal and on the basis that staff will continue to work very effectively with the Citizens Committee that's now looking after that. I do think that's by far the best answer here. And then lastly, on number, item number 15, the Russo Steel Auction, are we going to be voting on the fee waiver tonight? There was mention of a $1,400 fee waiver in there. Is that part of what we're voting on tonight? I couldn't quite get that clearly.
Mr. Hen, that's part of the recommended action, and I have heard from at least one other council member that they didn't think that was an appropriate thing to waive, and that's fine. I was anticipating probably something going the other way. So that was my recommendation. If you feel strongly that they should pay their way, that's fine, too. I was kind of erring on the side of this is an economic development opportunity for the city to have Russo and Steel here. I probably answered more than you wanted to hear.
Well, although it is a for-profit organization.
It is.
It is also a return on investment as far as our encouraging them to be here as well. Right. Any further clarification items?
None, thank you.
All right. Then we will move into our single item, staff report.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members and folks in the audience and at home. Consistent with the direction of the city charter, I am here with Dan Matashevitz to present the fiscal year 1415 budget. The overall budget can be summarized this way. It's balanced. There's no use of reserves for operations. We're making some improvements, actually, to our public safety services. We're continuing your council's investment in parks and infrastructure, and we're still getting a little bit smaller. So let's go through that in more detail. For both general fund and the budget in total, budgeted revenues do exceed expenditures in both categories. Here's where we are with discretionary reserve levels. You told us to squirrel away resources the past few years so that the community could cash fund big projects and invest in once-in-a-generation IT projects, and we're doing that. So by the end of June, reserves will be at 111 million. By the end of June 15, 89 million. These are still very healthy levels, and you can see what's causing that drawdown: cash funding a Marina Park, Sunset Ridge Park, the Corona Del Mar Fire Station Library, and more. So what makes up our discretionary reserves? You can see that we're, you can see three years' worth of reserves here. You can see that we're proposing consolidating some reserves into the larger contingency reserve for simplicity. The risk management line item includes our reserves for workers' comp, general liability, and uncompensated absences. And at the recommendation of the Finance Committee, all of these are proposed at full funding for fiscal year 14 rather than a three-year step up. So I'm going to talk now about revenues. We're going to talk about revenues first and then expenditures. So first up is property taxes. We're estimating a 3.2% increase in property taxes, bringing it to a total of 82.6 million. And as you can see from the pie chart, residential makes up the lion's share of the real estate, the residential real estate market is contributing to that increase. Now, just as a reminder, for every property tax paid, every dollar of property tax paid, 17% of that goes to, back to the city, while the remaining 83% goes to schools, goes to the county, and a number of other special districts. But that 17% adds up. At 82.6 million, property taxes are the city's number-one source of revenue. So the assessed value of properties in Newport Beach stayed on a slow ramp up, as this chart shows, even during the toughest years of the recession, mostly at that time because of older homes being sold to new owners and coming on to the tax rolls at the selling price. In 1314, the current fiscal year, Newport Beach's assessed valuation growth was 5.2%. That was the highest growth in the county. That results, though, in the second-largest total assessed value in the county, which is pretty remarkable. We're larger in assessed value than Anaheim and Santa Ana and only second to Irvine. So next up is sales taxes. You can see we're estimating a 4.93% increase for a total revenue of 31.6 million. So as, just as a reminder, when you shop in Newport Beach, or when visitors do, 1% of the purchase stays in town. So our biggest sales tax producers are heavily influenced by people who may not reside in the city. So these are people who shop at our auto dealers, restaurants, and at retail shops. So here's some of the trends that we're seeing in sales taxes year-to-year and the services that Dan talked about. And note in that first column, the off-green column, how significantly autos went up, a full 12.2% from the fourth quarter of calendar year 12 to the fourth quarter of calendar year 13. Now, some of this is driven by Tesla Motors, which is new to our city and new to the tax rolls in that regard. Next up is TOT or bed tax. It's up 5.9% to a total of 18.3 million, so it's another large jump. And as a reminder, the city receives 10% of room charge for each night. Then we remit 18% to Visit Newport Beach for further marketing efforts. So here's where TOT has gone over the last seven years. There's more than seven there, sorry. Looks like about eight years, nine years. You can see that this source has fully rebounded since the recession, and that's thanks to a better economy. It's also thanks to more hotel rooms, especially the resort at Pelican Hill. And that came online in 2008, 2009. So total revenues, and I'm going to talk now, I'm going to jump from general fund to total revenues, are overall are up 11.2% or 26.7 million over the revised budget. So these include lots of things. Everything from the main sources that we just talked about to fees, to water funds, to sewer funds, to developer contributions, and sometimes you'll see a spike because of that, and much more. So now we're going to jump to expenditures. And salary and benefits make up a significant portion of our budget. The growth here includes PERS rates. It includes increases in the health care contributions, merit increases, the increase to the paramedic, medicine program, and more. So...
You want to cover on that, the PERS issue on the first one before that?
Sure. So also included in this category is the amount that we pay to PERS. It's 27 million in total, which is offset by 7.4 million in employee contributions. So what's left remaining in this category is about $20 million of employer cost of PERS, if that makes sense. So that 20 million is sitting there as a part of the 131.9 million. Next, the capital improvements. We're going to talk about this a lot more in a bit with Dave Webb, but I want to, just one slide on it. One of the biggest changes that the community sees, say, from 10 years ago, is our investment in capital projects. It's nearly doubled since then. It was about 31 million. Last year it was 70, 71, 72 million. This year, we're proposing it at 61.8 million, which is, again, 30 million more than 10 years ago.
Dave?
Yes, Mr. Petros?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Please.
But, and this slide just shows some of the larger projects and investments, including 24.5 million, just in the streets and roads category, carried in that CIP. Again, the total budget is 68.1 million. This does include something we call rebudgets. That's where you see the difference between new and total. And a rebudget is our way of saying that every project isn't completed on June 30. We all wish it was. You'd start a new project on July 1, but that's not how it works. So those are called rebudgets. Mr. Petros?
Yeah, if I could ask a question. In this slide and the previous slide, you provide the comparisons between the previous fiscal year and the projections for the new year. In the summary tables for revenues, you do that in the performance plan and elsewhere, and show the percent increase. And I refer, like, the performance plan pages 22 to 24. However, in the expenditure by fund summaries, that's not there. And it would be really helpful, just like you've done here, if, could you add a column, or is there some way to demonstrate how we're changing from year to year as a percentage?
We could do a worksheet on that and add that.
I think that'd be really helpful for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan? So maintenance and operations are our next category. It's another big part of our expenditures. And remember that when we outsource services, expenditure switch from salary and benefits to M&amp;O. Now, that doesn't mean it's more costly. It just means that it moves categories. So I hope that's clear. Now, debt service is a relatively small but noteworthy part of our expenditures. It's about $8 million in fiscal year 1415, and it represents 4.6 of total general fund revenues. It's a tick downward from the prior year, where it was 4.7% of general fund revenues. And the city remains AAA by all three rating agencies. The overall total expenditures proposed are proposed to increase 2.8% over the original budget in 1415. So next, we'll cover pension costs. Now, there are a number of interesting stats on this page. I'm going to cover three of them. The percent of the normal cost of pension being paid by employees is now 51%. That now exceeds where Governor Brown wanted us, wanted all cities to be by in 2018. So we're already, we're already there. The second item is the unfunded liability, and it does remain high. It's $275 million as of the date of the last valuation. But that's two years old, and we've had two years of good interest earnings since then. Frustratingly, nearly 70% of that liability is attributable to employees that are long gone from the city's workforce. Finally, in 1415, cities will pay out of their own paychecks a record $7.4 million, up from zero a decade ago. City employees paying that, yes.
I have a question related to that. So the, it's 50% of the employee share of the total cost, and is that share a rising number?
No. Think of the normal cost as an individual, the normal cost of pension for, like, a position like mine, it would be, without incurring an unfunded liability, what is the cost of my pension? And what Governor Brown said is that normal cost, the employee should be paying half of it. And right now, our employees are, because our employees are creeping into the employer share, the traditional employer share of the pension cost. Remember in that, by the end of your current MOU contracts, the non-safety employees will be paying 12.35% of their salary, which is 4.35% above the employee's share. So the employees will be paying 4.35% on the employer's side.
Okay. So what happens when PERS charges the city of Newport Beach more? Who pays those rising costs?
Well, it's all based on salaries. So the employee's contribution ticks up based on their, if their salary ticks up. We're also, so, again, the employees are responsible for 12.35% of their salary. If, when PERS sends us a bill saying the employer is responsible for additional costs, that's something that's subject to negotiations, asks the employees to pay more or less than that.
Okay. Thanks, Alex. Got my question? Thank you.
Sorry, it's a hard answer, too. I'm being, it sounds more convoluted than it is. The next slide, then. Dan, please. So that, as your council knows, the council's made some significant progress when it comes to pensions. First is the overall staffing is down by 100 positions since 2009. Second, this concept of the employer-paid member contribution, it's a little bit jargon-ish, which ended up inflating pensionable salary by 8% to 9%, is now gone in this coming budget year. It's the first year that no employee group has had the employer-paid member contribution. You also have employees coming in at less generous tiers, and you, as a council, have taken the important step of telling PERS that the city wants a fixed amortization for our unfunded liability. That means more payments now. It means more cost now, but it also means less interest and a faster time to pay off that unfunded liability. But, as you know, it's not cheap. So now, we have an update on our full-time position trend. The budget proposes 729 full-time positions, down from 833 and 910, as Dave noted before. And still, this is the lowest number of positions in over a decade. Here's a quick summary of the position changes. We can get back to this slide, but I'd like to ask if there's any questions we haven't, any questions you might have that we haven't covered yet. And then, if, whether you have questions, or if you don't have questions, we've got four department heads are going to talk to you directly about kind of changes within this budget and things that are happening in their departments. And that's where we're going to roll to next.
When do we go through our long list of things that we don't want to hear about as far as our recusals?
That would be after the four and after Dan and I wrap up, so maybe in about 20 minutes.
Okay. And then the other thing is, with all of our, with the tidelands, if I were someone who had a, say, a peer, and I was paying this new fee, and I wanted to see what was allocated, if it had been promised, oh, this is all going into a separate account, how would I find that? Because we've pretty much lumped them into big, large things. So where would I look at the new revenue from just that, and where would I look at our, what we might have spent from just that?
Well, let me ask, I'll have Dave Webb during his presentation about the CIP talk specifically about the tidelands capital expenditures.
Okay.
And then we will be able to tease out for you from the budget, the line item that shows the incremental increase. And Nancy, specifically in your budget, if you wanted to look at revenues, it's on page 22 of the performance plan. It's called the capital fund, and the expenditures is Fund 240. It's also-
Right. No, I found them. But I, just as I say, they're, they're pretty general.
A little bit more highlight of that.
So it would be, I looked at it, and I couldn't tell specifically if I want to answer that question, what it was.
Okay. Very good. We'll help you do that. So first up is Chief Johnson, actually, with the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mary Hill and City Councilmembers. I'm Jay Johnson, your Chief of Police. I'm going to talk real briefly about four items I've been asked to talk about. Next slide, please, Dan, is computer inter dispatch records management system, our prisoner realignment, our AB 109, as well as our crime suppression unit, which you started funding this current year. I apologize. I don't have any of the fancy, exciting numbers that Dan had for you. So I'm just going to talk real quickly about these. Computer inter dispatch or CAD and records management system. This picture up here is kind of an analogy of what we just went through. On the left, you see our, this is one of the ancient, one of the first mobile phones, those brick-sized mobile phones that you might have had years ago. And to the right is, is a new smartphone. And imagine, if you will, going from using your mobile phone, that first mobile phone, which could sometimes dial a number and get a, get an answer, to a smartphone with 100 apps on it, and just the difference that you have going from one to the other. That's kind of what we did when we upgraded our CAT RMS system. We went from that mobile phone, the first mobile phone, to a smartphone, which means this happened just two months ago. We turned the switch on for this. So we're still trying to figure out these apps. We're still trying to figure out what all the smartphone does, and so we're working through that. Next slide, please, Dan. This is what we had in our old system. This is basically an overview of all the different, not all, but some of the major systems that we had. And when I say CAT RMS, it's actually more than CAT and RMS. It includes jail management and all these other things that you see up here. But CAT and RMS are the two big ones. They're really the backbone of the Police Department. This is our old system, multiple independent systems. Most of them did not talk to each other. Most of them did not share data. Some of them are literally decades old. Some of them, we built ourselves in-house. Next slide, please, Dan. And this is what we went to. The new Sun Guard One Solution software, all of them are intertwined. All of them talk to each other. All of them share data. All of them give us so much more functionality that we never had before. Next one, Dan. So with our CAT RMS system, we now have databases, as I mentioned, that are now interconnected, that speak to each other. It gives us much more functionality on things that we can do, that we can access. It, modern software, to give you an example, we've been running Windows XP. If you're familiar with Windows Systems, operating systems, we've been running Windows XP at the Police Department for quite some time now. Windows actually announced several months ago that they're no longer even going to support XP. We were running it because our old CAT system couldn't handle any newer version of Windows. Now we can. Actually, I just got upgraded to Windows 7 today on my computer. But things like that. Now that we have a modern software, which means we have speed, we have security that we didn't have before, compatibility that we didn't have before with a lot of different systems out there. The infrastructure now is adaptable. We can, we can customize it. We can add-on modules, kind of like you add-on apps. Not quite that easy, but there's modules that we can add-on. of like you add-on apps, not quite that easy, but there's modules that we can add-on, it can evolve as the Police Department evolves and as police work evolves. It eliminates duplication of efforts. Let me give you just one quick example of what I mean by eliminating duplication of efforts. If you've been to the doctor, you know, you just went six months and went back again, you probably have to sit in the waiting room for 15, 20 minutes and fill out those forms all over again with all of your information, where you live, all that kind of stuff. Think about what a police officer does, if he were to stop someone, a subject in the field. The first thing he does, he has to get all this information, find out if he's got warrants, if he has a driver's license. So he's got to write down on what we call a field interrogation card, a field interview card. Name, date of birth, address, height, weight, what you look like, all that kind of stuff, social security, we get all that stuff, he writes it down. Then if he wants to find out if he has a warrant or he has a driver's license, he's got to put that in the computer, so he either has to type that into his computer in the car, or say it over the radio, so dispatcher types it in the system. If we arrest that person, he goes down to jail. He puts all that information in all over again in a booking form that goes in our jail management system. When he writes the report, he has to put all that information again on the arrest report. When the investigator gets that report and has a supplement, he puts all that information again. If he tow's the car, all that information has to be rewritten again. If he has evidence of property, all that information entered again. That's what, a half a dozen, a dozen face sheets right there of just all of the same information rewritten. Now he doesn't do that, he or she. It's one time, and once it's in the system, it auto-populates all those different fields for every report. That's just a very, very simple thing, but very much appreciated by our officers. That's the kind of advances we've made, although simple, advances for our officers, saves a lot of time. Management tools, able to audit things that we couldn't before, crime analysis, dashboards we're working on now. Give you an example of that, of auditing, I got a call from Dave Kiff, he asked a question about a car that was parked in our parking structure over here last week, and somebody called about it, he wanted to know what happened. So what I did is I went to my map on my computer at my desk in my office, circled the area on the map around City Hall, Civic Center here, and said, give me the calls, all of the calls in this circle for the last seven days. Within seconds, I had all the calls, including that call that he was asking about. That's how easy it is to audit that stuff. One step closer to paperless. Not completely paperless, but we're closer. When I came to the Police Department four years ago, one of the things that I noticed, you might remember in old buildings, those old vacuum tubes where you, you can put a piece of paper in a tube and send it through the vacuum tube and to another department. I saw that in our Police Department, I thought, oh, this is kind of neat, you know, kind of antiquated, it must be here as a museum piece or something, somewhere with the building. They still use it, still use it to this day. We use it less now, but before, we had to run things from our records to down to our jail or to our dispatch, it went through a vacuum tube. We're a little bit getting beyond that now with the new CAD RMS system. So that's CAD RMS. Next slide, please. Prisoner realignment, AB 109. First and foremost, understand that AB 109ers, these realigned prisoners, they are committing crimes in our city. The most heinous crime that was committed last year in our city, actually, we found it wasn't committed in our city, but you've read about it, the young woman that was shot in the face, killed, murdered, and thrown over the Bay Bridge. We investigated that, our detectives did a great job, had that one suspect in custody within 24 hours, discovered that the crime did not occur in our city, it occurred in another city, but they drove through our city and driving through our city, decided to get rid of this body. Both suspects arrested were AB 109ers. Had they still been in prison, that young woman would still be alive today. We have AB 109ers that commit crimes on a daily basis in the city. Luckily for us, we've been able to stay ahead of that, partly because of CSU unit that I'm going to talk about next. But they are committing crimes, it's a big concern for us, we need to stay on top of that. It's a transitory population, they're in and out, there's only about 20 or so that live in our city, but 75% of the people that we arrest are not from Newport Beach, they're from surrounding cities, and they have a lot more population of these AB 109ers. The state has given us help, though, $5,500. So I can buy maybe an engine for a police car, can't buy the rest of the car, can't buy the officers that go in the car, but I can buy an engine with the help from the state. We do sweeps and compliance checks on a regular basis with probation, we go to their houses, and so far, it's been well over half of the people that we contact that are on early release have been in violation, either of new crimes or violation of their probation, been rearrested when we contact them. We have Lieutenant Jeff Brower, I think, is with us here tonight in the back row. He is actually on an AB 109 summit meeting committee. It's a county-wide where they're bringing together mayors, in the process now, put this together, mayors, city council members, DA's office, chiefs, managers, city managers, to discuss AB 109, its impacts on our community, on our county, and what solutions there are to try and meet that. This current budget, we're looking to complete our crime suppression unit, and next slide, please.
Chief, before you move on there, I just want to make sure I understand this, on these sweeps you were talking about, this is where you have noticed that AB 109ers are living in our city, and you go out and contact them?
Right, we go knock on their door.
And you're saying, in half the cases, when you go to contact them, they end up being rearrested?
Very conservative number, it's well over half.
Wow.
The recidivism rate, depending on how you look at, how you calculate, it's up to 60, 70, 80% recidivism rate. That's getting caught. That's people that get caught. Now, there's a lot of crimes that we just don't know who did it, you know, someone gets their iPad stolen out of their car. We can't say that's an AB 109er, but certainly, we know the recidivism rate, that's what we're going to target. So yeah, over half.
When you knock on the door, do you know prior to knocking that you're going to arrest them?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we just do what's called compliance checks, where we, they have certain conditions of their probation, and if they're out of compliance with those conditions, we'll arrest them. Oftentimes, then, we have them for new crimes, crimes that we know they've committed, we go and arrest them for that. I'll give you an example of crime suppression, you know, I'm going to talk about next, this last, just Sunday, we got word on the streets, said, hey, there's somebody selling heroin out on our streets, and he's staying at the extended stay, thank you, staying at the extended stay. So we got our crime suppression unit, saying, you know, let's follow up, find out who this guy is, and see what we can do. So they identified who he was, knocked on his door, found not only plenty of drugs and heroin, but also a lot of stolen property he's taken. We found out he's an AB 109er that has been arrested several times for burglary in the past. These are the folks that are wreaking havoc on our community as far as crime is concerned. And so that brings me to our crime suppression unit, which you guys thankfully supported during this current, this last budget, and we're asking for one more position to round it out for our one sergeant and four officers, it's two officer cars. And this is a very proactive, flexible unit. Essentially, it's a directed enforcement team, and we have a problem, we direct them to the problem, and they're focused on that problem. Obviously, I talked about how they monitor early releases from prison, but they're also a rapid response team, quick response team. For instance, we have a heroin problem, we hear somebody's dealing heroin right now, let's follow up, let's find out, what are they doing? Any crime trends, any hot spots, we have them on it right away. If it's Sunday at 3:00 in the morning, well, guess what, guys, you're now working Sunday at 3:00 in the mornings. If it's Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoons, well, that's now when you're working. We did promise them, we'd give them about 20 minutes off on Christmas, say hello to their families, but then they got to get back to work. But they're staying busy. They're uniform, plain clothes, whatever we need, in cars, on foot, whatever the job requires, they're there, and they're proactive. What I mean by proactive, when somebody calls the police, it usually becomes a crime that has already occurred or is in the process of happening. We want to prevent that. So a proactive unit is someone who goes out there and tries to prevent these crimes before they're happening, and that's what really makes this unit effective. And as I mentioned, they already started preventing many crimes. Example, this one last Sunday, this guy's a burglar who's going to go out and steal more, and we've prevented some of those crimes. So that's it for my update. Any questions from me?
Good work.
So next, I'd like to have Chief Poster come up and talk about an element to this budget that enhances our emergency medical system.
Mayor Hill, Councilmember, Mayor Hill, Councilmember Scott Poster, your Fire Chief, to give you our request for the budget, what we have in Newport Beach is an outstanding fire suppression and rescue department. Right now, we have three engine companies that have paramedics on them, and three ambulances with paramedics. Our goal is to expand the service we provide as healthcare providers. Funny for a Fire Chief to say, not only do we do exemplary fire protection, suppression, and rescue, but we are a healthcare provider. Over 70% of our calls is rescue. In other words, we're helping people in their house with medical care. We would like to put a paramedic on every fire apparatus, instead of having three fire engines that have paramedics, to eventually move to have 10 fire apparatus with paramedics. Why? We want to do that to provide response times, to provide ALS care, advanced life support, to a person who needs it very quickly. There is an optimum time for ALS intervention at around six minutes to provide care to a patient. To provide good care and good survival rates, we want to get treatment and intervention to that person, bring him to the hospital. So we're asking to support our paramedic program. In January of this year, we had 24 paramedics and 30 firefighters. Today, we have 27 paramedics and 27 firefighters, as we're slowly training the firefighters to become paramedics using the same people, no increase in bodies for the firefighters, but training them to become paramedics, so we can go from 24 paramedics in the end of 2013, at the end of 2015, to 42 paramedics and 12 firefighters. This year, we're asking for support to help us produce that outcome. What we're concerned about is patients and patient lives, saving lives. Ours, to support that, we're asking for a paramedic coordinator, which is a full-time sworn captain, who can be a field training officer and work within the field to help support our healthcare needs, contract nurses, a contract medical director to oversee quality assurance and oversee what we do in the field, as we change our paramedics to become, our firefighters to become paramedics over the next two years.
Chief Poster, as far as your contract medical director, the criteria of that is that they are an MD, and then they provide, as you indicated, quality assurance, you know, so people that are dispensing powerful medications, those are accurate, as well as administering these various procedures?
Not only an emergent, a doctor who's a certified physician, but an emergency department certified physician, someone who knows paramedics, knows quality assurance, can help us train our people, keep our nurse educators online, in sync, monitor our quality assurance, and monitor all of our care for our paramedics as well, and working hand-in-hand with the paramedic coordinator and our division manager within the EMS division.
I think that's a very good idea.
Thank you. And that's the end of my presentation.
Chief Poster? I noticed, and I understand it was possibly a titling issue, I saw in the staffing, the addition of one captain under fire, but I also saw that one captain under lifeguard. So are you adding two captain positions to the fire services?
No, sir. We were requesting one paramedic coordinator that will work in the EMS division as a new position, to be our field training officer and work with the medical part. That's it.
And then, I'm not quite sure how to ask this, other than, it seemed that in the accounting of all that you do, and your group does do quite a bit, when it comes to the provision of these services, a lot of it's filling out forms to, you know, for the reimbursements to the hospitals and the insurance. Is that something that is most efficiently done in your shop, or is that something that can be done in administrative services or some other?
Councilmember Petros, actually, we fill out patient care forms electronically at the scene.
Okay.
We do not spend much time filling out paperwork. We have a contractor who does our billing for us. We minimize the input within the department for any of the EMS section. We only do the forms we have to do, and have already reviewed that part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can ask Kim Brandt to come up next and talk about some of the things going on in community development.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hill, members of the council. If we could just roll back a slide, please, Dan. I like this picture because it shows that there's a lot of building activity going on in the city. This is the new 19-story high-rise at 520 Newport Center Drive. I know we don't get 20-story buildings on a regular basis, but we've been very busy at every level, from the smallest projects at the residential level to a brand-new high-rise in Newport Center. So the next slide shows that our building valuations are mirroring the trends that have already been presented to you this afternoon. And from fiscal year 2010, 11, we have increased in nearly $100 million in building valuation. And that means we're a very busy counter. In order to support this level of building activity, we currently contract to have two building inspectors, two plan check engineers, and a contract associate planner. We expect that this level of building activity will continue through the next fiscal year, and so our budget includes the continuation of those contract services. We've also, in order to support both code enforcement and building, we're including in this year's budget, a increase of a part-time code enforcement trainee position to a full-time position, and that person's going to be able to help, again, as I said, at the building counter to help keep our customers flowing in a smooth pace, and then also provides important support to our code enforcement team. Of course, we're, and I do want to mention the, thank you, Dan, I do want to mention the Newport Dividend Program, which is the prior slide. This program was initiated back in March of this year by the City Council, and what we're averaging in terms of fee waiver for new residential construction or residential remodels is approximately $9,110 per business day for building permit fees. So to date, we have waived nearly $400,000 in building permit and related fees, and so based on this trend, we expect that our original total valuation of fee waivers of $1.77 million will increase to $1.8 million. And the valuation of those building permits that we have issued to date is almost $19.5 million. So our planners are busy, too. They're busy at the planning counter as part of the one-stop permit center, but they're also busy with our long-range planning activities. And the big project that has been keeping many of my staff on their toes is the amendment to the city's general plan land use element. We anticipate getting through the public hearing process by the close of this fiscal year, but there will be a lot of follow-up activity that will carry over into the next fiscal year. If this project is ultimately approved by the voters of the city of Newport Beach, there will be a number of zoning code amendments and zoning map amendments that will be required, and possible changes to some of the development agreements, as well as amendments to the city's coastal land use plan. So that project will carry forward, I think, even after an ultimate adoption for another 18 months in terms of discretionary actions by the City Council. And the other project in the next slide that's keeping us busy, oh, excuse me, and here is a map that is showing the 18 changes to the land use map that are currently proposed with, as part of that big project. Next slide. We are also looking to gain certification by the California Coastal Commission of the city's local coastal program. In order to achieve that, the city is in the process of developing an implementation plan, which is more or less the zoning for the coastal area of the city. There's been a committee hard at work over the past few months, and we anticipate getting through the process in a relatively ambitious timeframe, I think, but we are making good progress, and the next slide does show our schedule. We anticipate having a complete document ready for public review by the end of this year, and with our intent to start the public hearing process next year. If this schedule is adhered to, we would hope to get a final implementation to the City Council and adopted in August of 2016. Given that the Coastal Act has been in place for a number of decades, I think that this is, will be a true milestone for the city once it's achieved. And with that, I will conclude my remarks, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Kim, you have been busy, your staff has been busy at the counter, and I'm wondering why on the performance plan on page 97, the projected activity for permits was estimated lower than all previous years where there was an increase? Are you suggesting that in the next year, permit activity will be diminished? And was your budget based on that?
Our budget is anticipating that maybe a slight tail-off at the end of next fiscal year, but not so significant that we would have to make adjustments to our staff resources. But even today, as we're working through our projections, we're seeing stronger numbers coming forward, so we may have to revise our projections come mid-year of next year. We're trying to be conservative in our approach and not over-project where we're going to be, so keeping a little bit of balance of looking at where we are today and where we expect to be.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Kim. Next up is Laura Detwiler. Laura's the fourth and final presenter, and talking about some of the budget changes that are in her budget.
Thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Laura Detwiler, your Recreation and Senior Services Director. I am happy to announce that there are more exciting times ahead for our residents in terms of how they spend their leisure time. Some of the new and expanded programs that we've included in your budget this year focus on Oasis Senior Center, expanding our case management and home assessment program. We already do a very good job of this, but as our community ages, they depend on us more to deal with some of those more difficult issues as we age, so we're preparing ourselves for that. We're also looking at expanding our health and wellness program offerings. Those have been very successful at Oasis since we've renovated that facility. We've got lots of new ideas on how we might help our folks live longer, happier lives. And then also looking at our nighttime programming as well, for those seniors that are working later on in life. later on in life, they too are seeking out our services, so we're looking at how we might be able to expand into the evening hours so they too can enjoy the resources that we're offering over at Oasis. And then also looking at CYC, we're putting together a five-day program for the working woman, so she can come over to the facility and actually get some fitness in after she's done with her day at work. And then also our Friday Night Out program, which gives children and their parents an opportunity to come together and do some fun activities over at CYC, but we also give parents an opportunity to drop their kids off, and we keep them active while they go out and maybe get in a bite to eat and have a nice evening out on their own. We're also having great success with music and art. We want to expand a program there as well. And then also, starting an ACE program, after-school enrichment over at Harbor View. We've been very successful at Newport Elementary and Mariners. We've been working with the principal right now at Harbor View. They're very excited to have us. It works very well when we're able to combine our after-school active kids program and our enrichment program. Our staff can take them back and forth to the school and give them a variety in their afternoon activities, so we're really excited about that program. And then also expanding our special events, breakfast with Santa for our preschoolers, also family fun days. We'll have the Second Annual Hoot Nanny at Cliff Drive Park, and then also looking at replicating that special event over at Bayview Park up in the Santa Ana Heights area, and then also bringing back our movies in the park, which are hugely successful, and looking at doing that at Grant House Park and Peninsula Park as well. And then also firing education and enforcement. We've been working on this since March. We, in this budget, we will be asking for additional staff, rec leaders, and park patrol officers to help us provide education and enforcement on the charcoal-only rule. We've been having some good success with that as well. We've had staff on hand on the weekends. We've purchased charcoal and are actually giving it away to folks to make sure that they understand that it can provide for a similar experience as wood-burning fires. They've liked it. They're certainly appreciative when we've given them the charcoal as well so they can try it out. We haven't seen a reduction in use in our fire rings, but we're certainly getting some good feedback from our community that are saying that there is less smoke coming into their homes, which has certainly been our goal. So this is a picture of a charcoal fire. You can see it's putting off some good flame and also some good heat, and some folks enjoying it as well. So we've done a lot of work on getting signage up, as well as getting some handout materials. Also, having our staff out there is adding some additional benefit as well in terms of having a presence down there and providing some beachfront customer service. So we'll have heavy emphasis on this this next year, and certainly this summer's going to be a really good test for us in terms of how this will go as we move forward. So unless you have any more questions for me, I'll turn it back to the city manager.
So, thank you, Laura. And just for the folks in the audience, folks at home, the last couple of presentations by Kim and Laura are reflective of the parts of our budget that are affected directly by participants. So when you look at comparing years to years, this is a good example of, we're finding more participation for our program, so we're trying to expand the programs to keep up with what people want. So we think about 15% of our total budget is participant-driven, and Newporters are just getting more active, the senior center is much more active, and Laura's programs are just going gangbusters, from the summer camp program to the one she discussed here.
And the nice part about that is that those are all self-funding. As they expand, they pay for themselves.
They're self-funding, and they're also, typically, they're hiring people from the private sector, because a lot of these are taught by contract instructors that come in, and you could just look at our Newport Navigator to see how many of the classes are taught by contractors. So with that, almost done, at least with everything but the CIP. So I'm gonna, wrapping up again, here's a summary of the budget. It's balanced. We continue to build, fix, and repair. I've talked about how there's a record amount of pension cost being shared with the employees, 7.4 million coming out of employee paychecks. We have a conservative debt level at 4.6% of our general fund reserves. The AAA credit rating continues. It's actually a smaller workforce, again, about 100 positions down from four years ago, while still adding to public safety. And this is the budget where you have seen, we've saved up cash and we're spending the cash for things like Marina Park, Sunset Ridge, and information technology to make us faster and more efficient. So by the end of June, that number comes to about $89 million in our reserves. So I'm going to hand it back to Dan. Before I do, I wanted to say just a big thank you to the finance staff for all the work they put into presenting this in what's always a challenging format, but hopefully a fairly readable format for folks that are willing to slog through it. From, so from Susan, to Dan, to Steve, to Rakshana, to Evelyn, to the whole team there, thank you so much for all the work you put into this. We sure appreciate that. So with that, Dan's going to conclude with just kind of what's next, and then certainly welcome questions, and then we'll move to the CIP.
Thank you, Dave. Here's what's next. You get two weeks to reflect. Then on the 27th, we'll have a study session on special events and any other issues you'd like to see in more depth. And then on the evening agenda, we'll set the public hearing for the budget adoption on July 10th, sorry, June 10th, and then if all goes well, we'll start the fiscal year on July 1.
Good. Okay?
I have a couple of questions, just sort of off-the-wall things. On page 162, we're talking about our capital assets schedule, and we did our year of acquisition and historical costs.
Sorry, Ms. Gardner, what document are you talking about? The detail, budget detail?
The Performance Plan.
Performance Plan, okay.
And at the top, we talk about the Lower Castaways parcel of 2009, and the historical cost was almost $8 million. I thought that was part of a deal, and that, is that right, Ed?
So I believe we acquired the project at no cost, although it was, we're required to have that property appraised and recorded at the time that we acquired the property.
Well, maybe there should be an asterisk there to...
A note that discusses that this isn't actually purchase price, this is a value.
Right. And then, I noticed that we were using on page 108, that we were using less reclaimed water, and I didn't know whether that was because we have become more efficient with our irrigation. I mean, obviously, we'd like a bigger percentage of our water use being reclaimed water.
We can check that out and provide a report back to you on that.
And then one more thing, I noticed that, for example, in Harbor Resources, it went from like, I'm just off the top of my head, maybe 2 million, 2 million, 2 million, 12 million, 2 million, 2 million. And when there's such an aberration, and that was probably the dredging, but it would be good to have, again, a footnote to explain why.
Okay, thank you. Good suggestions. So just again, for the folks at home, Councilmember Gardner is referring to three documents, which are available on our website. There's a document called the Capital Improvement Program. There's one called the Performance Plan. There's one called the Budget Detail, and I usually advise people to look at the Performance Plan first, because that's the most reader-friendly version of that. So again, those are on our website. Just look under Budgets.
All right, any further comments at this point in time?
Okay, no, go ahead, sorry. Ready to go into CIP. So this is a time when I believe the city attorney has given folks your council recusal recommendations, so you may want to state those before we talk about the CIP.
Councilwoman Gardner?
I have three. One is the totlot on refurbishment on Bayside Drive, which is within 500 feet of my home. And then the citywide slurry and the citywide curb and gutter, because we haven't defined their areas specifically, they may be within that area, so for safety's sake, I will recuse myself from those items as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Petros?
For the very same reason that was stated by Councilwoman Gardner, I've been recommended to recuse myself from alleys.
Stay out of those alleys.
Councilwoman Selig?
No, no recusals.
Councilwoman Daigle?
I'll cover it with anything 500 feet from my home, but specifically East Bluff Drive, there's a bicycle project.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hen?
I'll start with a question from Councilmember Selig. Do you live in this city? How come you don't have any recusals here?
I live in a very unique area.
Okay. Well, I sure live here. I've got several recusals. The item number two, the Lito Fire Station Replacement. Number nine, the Vialito to 30th Street Project. Number 11, the Newport Boulevard to 32nd Street Project. Let's see here, I think there's one more on this list somewhere. Oh, yes, Newport Boulevard Landscaping, that's number 34. And, oh, one more, number 68, the Newport Boulevard Water Main Replacement. That's a big conflict. So I have those conflicts, in some cases because of the location of my home being close to the project, or in other cases because of a consulting relationship I have with a business in the Vialito Plaza.
Thank you. Councilwoman Curry?
We're apparently not doing anything in my neighborhood either, so I have no recusals.
For myself, I will recuse myself, item number 23, and item number 23 being the Newport Boulevard Regional Traffic Signals. Item number 27, Mariners Mile Highway Configuration and Land Use. Item number 34, Newport Boulevard Landscaping. Item number 55, Slu. Item number 59, Turf Replacement Irrigation retrofit, because I own property within 500 feet of those items. With that, I think we are ready for our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good afternoon. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, and Jamie Hook, our Finance and Administrative Manager for Public Works. And we're pleased to present our Capital Improvement Program. This is a continuation of the early look we saw earlier in the last month, and we want to go through a little more detail with you and add a little bit to that, so if we could, we'll kick in. And some of these slides are repetitive from last year. I like to always show the folks at home how we come up with various things. This is the Capital Improvement Program. The program basically sets priorities and appropriates funds, provides a basis for our project planning, and identifies potential conflicts, develops and constructs identified public improvements, addresses significant maintenance issues, and also responds to the changing priorities and conditions of the city and council and the community. Before we go into this year's projects, I'd like, again, to recap. I think it's important to kind of see where we've been, and I'm going to go a little more detail this year, a few years back, because we've been really working on this stuff, and I think it's important to highlight. Public Works has a couple of goals that council asked us to set. Two of these are up here. It has to do with our schedule of our CIP and also the budget. And you'll see on the first column there, you'll see our schedule, and our goal there is to complete our projects within two months of our baseline schedule. Every year, we set a baseline schedule, all the projects are in, and then we try to meet that goal. And we're basically near that goal. Our goal is 85% of those. This year, we came in at 82%. We had a couple draggers this year, a couple projects that are coming in. Santa Ana Heights is one of them. It's taken a little longer than we thought, so it's lowered a goal in that. The other goal we have is on our budget side, and that's to be within our 10% contingency 90% of the time. And this one I show as a negative 71%, and I purposely did this because of that slate of projects that were passed this year, several of those, we asked for higher contingencies. We asked for 15%, particularly because we had good bid items, we had good ability to capitalize on that savings. So what I did is I added another column, and when you look at it with the combination of the 10% and the 15% projects that we asked for additional contingency, we're within 94% and higher than our goal, so I thought that was important. We delivered 20.98, almost $21 million for the projects. Total 17 projects this year, that's, again, maybe a little lower than we've had in years past. We typically will do, in the last couple of years, 20, 25 projects. This year, we came at 17 large, complex projects, and I had a lot of other things. Along with, there's a lot of projects right on the line right now that we're moving over, and we'll be approving some tonight, some in July and August. Also wanted to kind of show this slide. It shows a history, and this is kind of important to kind of show the workflow. It's a big broad brush, and the important line there for me is the gold line that shows our approved budget every year. And if you look way back in 2001 and before, we used to run about $20 to $30 million, and then it kind of skipped up in the 2000s there to about a $40 million budget. And then around 2007, 2008, we kind of kicked the gear up another notch, and we went up to about $60 million. And we're kind of floating along that, along with big spikes of various city halls and other park projects that bring that red line up, which is the adjusted budget we use as we add things to the approved budget every year. On the bottom there, you just see the Public Works employee count. It's pretty much stayed the same, and that's an important thing to note as we get into our next slide, because the last few years, councils asked, how can we help to move these projects forward? We know we have a lot of work. We've been really aggressive at tackling a lot of projects in the city. So we wanted to kind of give you a workload indicator slide. This is kind of the next one to look back. And as you can see, this is basically the number of contracts running through, and these are professional service contracts, and that would be things like architectural services, engineering services, geotechnical testing, anything that falls in those contract levels. We just kind of plotted this, and you notice the same kind of spike we've been going up. And what that's really showing is we're delivering the projects as council asks. We've kept our staff the same, and we've really leaned on the consulting side of the world. I like to kind of staff for the baseline. That's the bread and butter projects you do day in and day out. And as we come through these peaks, we've been leaning on the consultant community, also contract staff. We have several contract staff folks, along with a slew of interns. It's really our magic. We've got about eight of those working for us, to really get things done, and you can see that peak's gone up. And that's one of the secrets of how we've been able to address some of this workload. With that, just kind of giving a glimpse of what's going to be coming soon, these are projects right now under construction, and you'll see these around town. We've got our annual sidewalk project going right now. That's over in the Newport Heights area. Lifeguard Headquarters is completing up. We're trying to get that done for summer, and it's coming along well. Bubble Boulevard Beautification, you know, if you've driven down there, it looked like a war zone, but we're wrapping up. In the next few weeks, they'll be planning, and that project's really coming along. We've got work going on in another city, actually Fountain Valley is one of our wells, one of our four wells is being rehabilitated. And then Corona Mar has had its share with our Corona Mar Transmission Project. We've been going through the center of Coast Highway and up in various streets there. Up in Newport Coast, we've been working on the community center. That's going to be delivered roughly in fall. Mariners and West Cliff, we're doing streetlights in that area of town. Again, I put some dates there. We're going to complete these projects. Sunset Ridge and Marina Park are under full construction. If you've bid by either one of those projects, really spectacular as you go through Coast Highway, Superior, seeing a Sunset Ridge under construction. One note on Sunset Ridge, I put spring of 2015. The project's actually going to come in about the end of the year, winter 2014, early 2015. This is when they'll actually open it. We'll work with our recreation folks to make sure the fields get fully embedded, the grass gets rooted, before we actually start putting games on it. Other projects nearing construction, we have a lot coming through this year. We have the landscaping improvements. We want to do it by 15th and Monrovia. That's going to be starting here roughly June. A lot of various residential streets are going to go into overlays and rehabs. Tonight, you'll see the modernization Phase 6, which is San Joaquin Hills and Newport Coast, the number seven of an eight-phase project starting in June. San Miguel Restrooms and the picnic areas being completely revamped. That project's starting again in June. We have a slurry program about to start in Newport Heights behind our concrete program. The ocean piers are getting, I'm sorry, we have the harbor piers about to start in July, and again, we have the ocean piers coming up. We have a couple bike lanes that we're trying to get. East Bluff Bike Lanes, we've been working on, and we're working Caltrans. We're hoping to start that in July, too, once we get our Caltrans approval. Several trash collection devices, water quality devices that we're working on, and also the auxiliary maintenance yard that'll be starting up here in August up at the Big Canyon Reservoir. Got a lot of things right behind them coming, and you'll see these projects coming out, and this is just a flavor for folks to see what's going to happen. Sunset View Park, we've got the little portion on the top of the mesa there up by Villa Balboa that'll be kicking off in July, and we'll do that portion of it. The ocean piers I mentioned, we had this one, you saw it recently, we had a bid problem with it, so we rejected the bids, and we're bringing it back, but we've got the time again because we don't start until September. We don't want to work during the summer there. Corona Mar Park is designed and sitting on the shelf. We're just waiting for the deed to come through from the donor of that property. And then the East Coast Highway Signal Rehab going through Corona Mar out to Newport Coast is ready to go. We'll be starting that project as soon as we can tee it up and get going in October. We've got some pavement rehab up in campus and San Joaquin Hills we'll be doing shortly. Newport Boulevard Water Main, right through, from about Vialito all the way down to about 28th Street, we're going to be doing the water main in there. And then, right behind the Sand District Project, we've talked about recently on Dover Drive, we'll be doing the pavement portion and the median rehabilitation, which council saw the view of the medians that we're going to be putting in there. Ocean Boulevard Marguerite Concrete, that's our next big concrete projects over in Corona Mar. We're just starting those projects. We'll be doing Phase 1, which is part of Ocean Boulevard and Marguerite, and then Phase 2, we want to do the rest of Ocean Boulevard, and we've included Poppy in that, and we'll be starting designing some community outreach on that. And one of the reasons why 17 projects got delivered is that there is just a lot of other stuff we're doing, and I put the slide on here, and it's not all-inclusive. There's things you'll see that are missing there. I noticed the golf course and some other things that were not on. I noticed the golf course and some other things that were not on there, but there's quite a lot of stuff going on in the, in the community, as you are well aware. You sit on the subcommittees and you provide leadership on a lot of these items. And I also have a little chart there to give folks the feeling of our encroachment permits. As Kim mentioned in the Community Development Department and their development, we kind of have our development mirrors with them with the public encroachment permits, and we had the little lull going through the recession, and now it's also climbing and causing a lot of staff work there. So, the theme that I'm really showing is a lot of progress is being made, and we've had great leadership. This council that I know, ever since I've been at the city, has stepped up and wanted to take on a lot of projects and take on a lot of areas and rehab and fix things that have been sitting idle for a while. So, this is kind of the start of that, and we continue of neighborhoods being beautified, and we have several new parks underway, as you know. We have several being rehabilitated. We've got back to contributing $5 million to our fund, and this graph kind of shows your contribution to the general fund, to the capital side. We used to do about five, six million dollars years ago, and we went through the recession, we dropped that down, and now we're back and consistently funding $5 million back into the general fund, into the capital program. With that, you see on this next slide here, some indicators of the progress that's being made in our pavement index. I wanted to show this slide because it's been a concern many years, and you're seeing that improvement. You've invested wisely in that. Back in 2009, we had an average index of about 75, and the three lines you see is the residential on the bottom, and on the top you see the arterials. We've really tried to hit that hard, and we've raised that PCI, which is Pavement Condition Index, and we're roughly at an average of 79 now, and that's probably getting close to our target of 80, 82, right in there. The arterials dipped just a little, and that's actually good because we're getting, we put that workload into the residential side, particularly in the concrete side that was needing addressing. So we're seeing a lot of progress in there. Progress in other areas, since 2007, we've seen our signal system where our council members wanted to really address our modernization of our signals. With that, we've added six new signals, 100 of our 123 signals have now been modernized, that's new cabinets, new controllers, new programming, fiber optic leads, connection back to the Civic Center here where we can actually see those. We've got 31 of the 39 planned closed-circuit TV cameras now in place, in which we're getting great results, and you might have seen the newsletter during the fire we recently had on Jamboree, our Traffic Operations Center actually was able to intervene on that and start working on our signal system and diverting traffic on Jamboree to other arterials on the fly. We could watch that and monitor with the cameras that are in place. We've also been rehabilitating our signals with that, putting money into new wires, new heads and things, and 29 of the 123 are being, have been rehabilitated. We've started work on our streetlight system, which was neglected for a long time. We've got, we're starting to change out old lamps and put in LED lamps. We've got 486 of the 64,000, 6,400 lamps been converted to LEDs. Nine of our circuits have been completely rehabilitated from series to parallel. Series circuits that used to have old fuses and old hardware that we couldn't get anymore, and we've put them on parallel and put them on their own separate meters, which has added cost savings. We kind of showed right here that we've, we've really showed on the savings side, and we're continuing, 247,000 kilowatt hours saved, which is about $120,000 a year in cost, so it's starting to pay results in that. We've had significant investment in our harbor. You've seen the lower and the upper harbor being dredged, the Rhine Channel being cleaned up and dredged out, the new wharf at Rhine Channel, along with countless other things we're doing down there, so wanted to kind of point that out. Progress being made in our facilities. Sometimes we don't see this because they're all over, but when I started looking at this, thinking, wow, we've really touched a lot of these with the Newport Theater Arts Center, the Mariners restroom we put in years ago, Corona Mar restroom's been redone, Oasis has been rebuilt, the Community Youth Center's been rehabilitated and rehabbed, Carol Beak was done just recently, the Civic Center, which came from City Hall over here, the Library Edition. We're currently working on the Lifeguard Headquarters and the Utility Yard remodel. Police Facility Lobby was remodeled recently, and there's a host of little projects in here that are on addition to this list. So, with council's guidance, we've really started addressing our facilities, and we have more to come, you'll see as the coming up CIP for this year, we'll point out. So with that, sometimes questions are asked, how do we actually figure out all these projects? Well, the projects are, come out from various means. We have council, community, and staff that look and suggest and identify projects for us. We have developed projects through goals of the council, they'll come up every year, and they do their goal setting and say where they want to hit and address in the city. And then we also have a series of master plans that I've listed here that are developed by staff and council and the community too. For instance, the Facility Financing Plan looks at all our facilities, prioritizes them, figures out the funding mechanisms and moves those forward. We've added the Facility Maintenance Plan this year because we have capital maintenance on our facilities, we want to address now, and in your budget coming up, you'll see a line item for that. Our Pavement Index comes out of our Pavement Management Plan and our Water and Sewer Master Plans. Those are kind of how they come, and some come by basically order, federal lawsuits, state actions, things like that, so that's kind of where we get our.
Dave, let me stop you here for a second. That, that list of master plans is really an important list. This city is a very well-planned city, has been for a long time, and we continue to add better planning to that overall structure. Staff deserves a great deal of credit for this. We are not reactive in dealing with the problems in this city, we are proactive, we are prospective and planful with all of this, and that's hugely important. Things just happen here, and people don't really realize it, things stay good, get a little better, whereas other cities where there's big problems and a lot of dust kicked up over things, we just keep things moving along the right way here, and to your credit and the rest of staff here.
And that's a good point, Councilmember, and those plans are, if you ever look at them, they really are the key to the flow. And one of the goals you'll see in our capital program, we wanted to go to a five-year budget, and you'll see some of that in this year, so we just haven't had the time and staff to get there. But we want to take those plans and start projecting out further for you, so you can start seeing the financial burdens further out. The other thing we want to do with our capital improvement program is it's address council priorities. In the last couple of years, we've really been looking at neighborhood revitalization, rehabilitating the aging infrastructure of our neighborhoods, you'll see that in the streetlights and the pavement, the walkways, improving the city circulation through vehicle circulation, cycles, bicycles, pedestrian flows, you'll start seeing more and more of that in our master plans and into our capital improvements. Installing better landscaping, new landscaping and improvement, and again, you'll see that theme run through the programs and the projects. Encouraging private development, that's what I think we've seen by council's leadership as we invest in neighborhoods, and we see private development come back and start investing too, and it kind of spirals up on that, we're hopeful. Building and improving our parks and recreational facilities, and another big element is the undergrounding of overhead utilities, and we actually have a lot of that going on, again. Other council priorities have been the tidlens area, we've had a tidlens management committee that looks at this, looking to improve boater and visitor-supporting facilities and services, repairing and maintaining our beaches and bulkheads, seawalls, again, there's a lot of that in the coming program. Dredging and improving our water quality are all important factors, we try to.
Dave, in that area, I would actually like us, I would like to see some information. Dredging is something that doesn't, I mean, the need doesn't go away, and, and we're making some headway, I think, on the eelgrass issues. I would like to see the numbers on the city having its own small dredger and barge, and a service that we could offer to the residents for dredging around their properties, hopefully at a cost that would be significantly lower than what would otherwise be experienced.
The Harbor Commission has looked at this, so you might want to refer back to them.
Okay.
And I'll ask Mr. Miller to follow up on that, and we'll take a look. So moving into this next proposed CIP, it's another large year, a lot of projects, a lot of challenges, but we're looking for ways to take that on and deliver those. We have 82 items in this next CIP. There are projects and programs and studies and rebudgets. You'll see them, they're organized by categories, you go through this and refer. We actually have a draft CIP, and if you want to look at that, it's on the website, it'll show in detail on all these projects. Total of $61.7 million roughly, 40 million of that is new, 41 million, I'm sorry, 21 million is rebudgets. And again, the rebudgets are projects that are going to carry over the line. We have several that we're going to award tonight, we actually are going to rebudget because we can encumber the money in time, so as soon as July 1st comes, we'll actually write the money on to an encumbrance. So with that, we're going to move right into the project list and go through the general projects. And I listed the most priority ones, I'm sorry, the large projects here. There are a few in the CIP that I didn't list, they're small, things like raising manholes and things like that. I wanted to capture the essence of what we're really trying to catch here. So, our first category is facilities, and we have $8.8 million worth of projects in here. Big Canyon Reservoir Auxiliary Yard, which I mentioned earlier, it's about to get awarded and get started in the summer. We have existing capital maintenance, that was the capital maintenance plan I referred to earlier. We're going to put $1.5 million in there, that'll handle the major things like carpet, painting, HVAC maintenance. Newport Aquatics Center restroom, we need to do some work down there to revamp that restroom. San Miguel Park and picnic structures is again a project just kicking off, and that's completely rebuilding the restroom and the picnic structure facility. West Community, West Newport Community Center, and again, we just had a community meeting last night on this, and we're making good progress to move that forward. We've got some seed money in there to start concept designs and development. Two of the long-awaited projects that have been in our capital finance plan are the fire stations in Corona Mar and at Lido, and we're going to get those started. There's a note on the Corona Mar Fire Station, as we started looking at that, we thought it'd be advantageous to look at the library rebuild next door, so we're going to try to look at those together, see if we can come up with a plan that rebuilds both those facilities and better utilizes the site there, allows some more landscaping, more parking. And then again, looking at the Lido Fire Station replacement down below. Moving into our next category is our Streets and Drainage category. Under here, we have $24.4 million programmed, and I've broken it down kind of in the major areas there, about 8 million of that will go into the arterial system, 14 of that will go into the local streets and alley programs, another million will go into streetlights, about a half million into the drainage system, and roughly about close to $1 million into street landscaping. Under arterials, the big projects next year are going to be Dover Drive, what we spoke about earlier, that's, as the Sand District's done, we'll go ahead and replace the medians in there, and then rehab the pavement.
Is the Sand District supporting that financially as well?
They are, actually. They contributed 650-something thousand dollars to us to help rehab the pavement that they're cutting up. They're also doing some waterline improvements.
Is that true, where we see all these other agencies digging up our streets all over town, in every instance, are they contributing to the repair of that street once the project is finished?
Generally, some would argue they have a franchise and they give you an annual fee, but we look at differently. When they do a permit, we collect a fee to inspect, we require them to replace pavement or curb and gutter damage and broken, to the best extent practicable.
Excuse me, Dave, but being public utilities, we have to let them in. They have access.
Yes, that's true. Another large project is Irvine Avenue up through the S-Curve, San Diego to Montevista, and this is a pavement project, but we also have some OCTA water quality money coming in to do some maybe turf replacement in there, so we're going to put the two together and rehab the medians up there at the same time. Newport Boulevard, around 32nd Street is a long program, we're, we're working on the design, we're working on the right-of-way right now, this will move us into the construction phase, once all those pieces come together. We're also working on a project over by Old Newport Boulevard and West Coast Highway to add a third lane through there and correct some bike improvements and other things that we need to do at that little intersection. We have various other arterial streets there, MacArthur, San Miguel, Campus, San Joaquin Hills, we're going to do some major paving on in the next year. Under our local streets.
Dave, if I may interrupt, just to clarify too, when you, when you talk about those street improvements, various arterial street pavement overlays, if I'm not mistaken, most, if not all of those, also include enhanced bicycle facilities as well.
That's correct. We're putting in bike lanes and facilities as we go.
So we are not only improving again for the motorist, but for our cycling commuters as well.
Good point, thank you. Local streets and alleys, we have our annual slurry program, and as you recall, we started a seven-year program, it'll be seven years coming up, we're going to be doing the lower portion of Corona Mar, and that'll be the last of the seven-year cycle, which we've touched every parking lot and local street in the city at that point. We have our concrete program that we do annually too, and that usually goes right in front of our slurry program, so that'll be in Lower Corona Mar also, and then we'll start the series over. We're actually looking at skipping one year, we'll be talking about probably next year on that, and putting more of that money into concrete and then going maybe to an eight-year cycle. As we talked years ago, the best pavement programs run about seven to 10 years, you slur your streets every year, and so we're running it seven years right now, and it's looking good, it's really made some incredible improvements in the neighborhoods. We're also looking at Corona Mar, I mentioned the concrete streets, Ocean Boulevard is one of the streets that long-needed improvement. We're looking at doing that in two phases, and we'll be trying to address Poppy and some of the concerns on that from the highway down to Ocean Boulevard in that project. Bay Avenue, we're continuing down there, we went from 15th, as you know, down to 10th Street last year, and we're going to continue with some Bay Avenue concrete improvements in that neighborhood. And then, one of the bigger projects coming on the Babo Island area is the Park Avenue Bridge, and this is the construction money for that, we're moving in through design right now, we'll be hopefully applying to the Coast Commission for permitting soon on that, and then we'll be moving into construction. And that is the complete replacement of that bridge. Another area we've been looking at over on the peninsula is one of the old commercial areas here, and this is 15th Street, Baboah. Basically, it's, it's a lot of concrete out there, as you know, the area, it's in rather poor shape. We've been looking at bringing that back as a street improvement project and adding some landscaping and other amenities to maybe revitalize that, the, the commercial area there, along with Marina Park coming in and kind of revitalize that whole node there. So look for something of that in the future, it's in this budget for design.
So what you're showing is just like, maybe we'll do this, because I have real concerns about stuff when we put it, where cars are driving over, that it looks wonderful for a week, and then the maintenance is just a nightmare, so I'd be real careful about what we put on the surface there.
Yeah, and on this particular project, I showed you some of the artistic renderings at the bottom, there are landscape architects, he's got some interesting ideas, I don't know if we'd actually approve this, where actually our next step is to go to the community and show them and get some ideas from the business owners and the residents of what they'd like. I think the big theme there is adding street trees and landscaping, some decorative concrete, but we will be careful about what we put in there. Streetlights and drainage, not a whole lot of money this year. Again, we're going to do some more LED streetlight changings and looking at other technologies in the streetlight area to improve our efficiencies and reduce our electrical costs. Some minor storm drain repairs, it'll be done this year. And then some significant investment in landscaping, we've got 15th Street and Monrovia is in the budget right now, that'll be coming up. Newport Boulevard Landscaping will be part of the larger project. West Coast Highway Landscaping, we've got the design funded in here, we do not have the construction money, that was one of the things we talked about adding maybe mid-year because it's about $5 million.
Dave, shouldn't that Newport Boulevard landscaping design go down to Baboah Village and not Baboah Boulevard? As we talked about last time.
Yeah, I may have that wrong, I anticipated we talked about going down to where it joins Baboah Boulevard. We do have the 15th Street and we're doing Marina Park, but we can include that further. Right now, I wasn't thinking that, if the council liked to, we could go all the way down to Baboah Village. That's quite a stretch. We have about $200,000 in the project, or, excuse me, the budget for that. Corona Mar Entry Plaza is, as council directed, in here. I would note, this is shown as a contribution, the funding has never really been defined, so we're showing it as a contribution probably from the bid, unless some other direction is given on that. And then, the various spot landscape enhancements are several projects, in fact, Councilmember Selich introduced several of those last time, and those have been packaged up, so you have things like the landscaping at PCH and Jamboree, Bayview Village walls along there, we've got some spot landscaping down along Marina Avenue right at Bayside Drive, and a couple other projects in here, also the Marina Avenue sidewalk improvements are in this various spot projects.
Have we inserted in any place the, along MacArthur Boulevard, along the backside of Big Canyon Country Club?
We have a slide coming up on that, and that'll be a discussion, and we'll need your guidance on. Under our transportation program, again, we have $5.8 million in this, another significant area of contribution. One of the highlights here will be the Mariners Mile Highway Configuration and Land Use that we're just kicking off right now, starting that program. The Newport Boulevard Signal Synchronization and the Bristol Street Signal Synchronization are both projects out of Costa Mesa that we're teaming with, they're actually doing the projects as they extend into our city, and we'll be contributing effort to that. East Coast Highway Signalization, I mentioned, that's going to be going from basically Irvine, I think it's a Jamboree, all the way down to Newport Coast, looking at all those signals to rehab the ones we haven't touched already. And then we have Phase Six and Phase Eight. Phase Six is on your agenda tonight to start the construction of that project and Phase Eight's in design phase and we hope to bring that to construction soon for you.
Dave, on the signal synchronization, does that pretty much wrap it up or you've got a couple more phases?
With the completion of Phase Eight, that wraps it up. The bulk of it's done tonight with Phase Six because we already did Phase Seven. Phase Eight is a catch-up. It takes Ford Road and a couple pieces here and there and includes them in the system.
Well, it's nice to have money. The city have money. It's nice to have a plan, but really you executed that signal synchronization. I think five years ago I had my doubts, but you totally powered it through. Big accomplishment, thank you.
I felt a big stick, but thank you for that. It was good to get it done. I think it's really paid off more than we even imagined when we see, for instance, I mentioned the fire, things like that, we never envisioned that we could get to that level and do. Transportation, again, we have some other areas here. Superior Coast Highway Pedestrian Bridges, we are putting in for an active transportation grant. That's the next federal call for money under the MAP 21 projects. We're going to see if we can get some grant money to build those bridges. We're also working with OCTA, so I look forward to some nice concepts coming up on those in the future. The East Bluff Bike Lane, as I mentioned, is ready to go. We're just waiting for Caltrans to approve the E-76. We have grant money tied up in that and that's what's holding that one up. Newport Bike Lanes, that project too, is also ready to go. We're waiting for Caltrans to approve that funding. Bonita Canyon Sports Park, there's some parking improvements we want to do in there to help improve the amount of parking we can provide in there. And also, we have money in there for Tustin Avenue, the modifications, we promised the neighborhood to do some traffic calming. Under our harbors, beaches, and parks areas, we have $6.7 million programmed in there. Some of the significant projects in there, again, are castaways. This would be the lower castaways developing the concept, taking it from where we're at right now and then probably moving into something that the community can get around, council can approve, and then processing that through the design and permitting stage. Corona Del Mar Park at Park, I'm sorry, CDM Park at Park, we've talked about, that's ready to go, just waiting for the deed. Sunset View Park, again, is in there. And then we're also doing enhancements to Back Bay View Park. I know we're doing some landscape enhancements now. We're looking at a Phase Two that we'll probably need to put into the Coast Commission to add some facilities like bike nodes and other things into that park and enhance it. Bonita Creek Park, we have a synthetic turf plant for that park this year. It's a very highly used and lighted field and that's will be a good addition to that. San Joaquin Hills Pickleball Courts will be added. We're hearing great things about pickleball.
Just before, as we switch it over, that takes a certain amount of time. Are we trying to go off-season or how are we accommodating all those teams that won't have a field?
Laura, do you want to catch up?
Yeah, the artificial turf.
It's a pretty quick process, so what we'd like to do is time it in between seasons so we don't have downtime.
Thank you. Little work up at Spyglass Hill Reservoir. We have to replace the playground equipment and the sand in that facility. And then moving towards the harbor, we've got a lot of work going on. We've got the Baboa Island seawalls, we've been talking about a lot and trying to come around the consensus to move that project forward. We've been doing beach sand management for the last year or two and I've heard great reports on how that's taken care of a lot of little problems and we're going to continue with some maintenance and management on that. We're also looking, we have money this year for a new public pier over at Central Avenue by Lido Village and again, we'll be working towards the construction of that or the design of it. Ocean Pier Maintenance and the Harbor Pier Maintenance that we'll be doing, some more mooring field realignments. And then we've got some money in there for tide gates. And there is a little more seawalls out in the community that needs addressing, so we add some money in for harbor-wide seawalls around Newport Island and some other areas that need some attention. Under our Water Quality Environmental Program, another large program this year, $8.7 million. And there's quite a lot of items in here. We have the Bayview Heights, a lot of these are grant-funded by the way. That's where OCTA's been providing us a lot of money for these projects. Bayview Heights is a wetlands we want to do up towards Santa Ana Heights in that area, going into the Upper Bay, and this has grant money in it. Big Canyon Wash Restoration is basically doing some water quality and restoration of the canyon there. And there's a settlement money going into this, so there's a good chunk of money going into that. That'll be a big project coming up. We've got some litter devices. You've seen the CDS structures coming through, so Dominican has a litter device and there's some other in here, just CDS structures down lower, the stormwater interceptors that are down further on the thing. And then we have Santa Ana Heights Regional Project. This is where we're going to be contributing money to a county channel. Santa Ana and Costa Mesa are taking the lead on this, but will be the beneficiaries. This will be up by the golf course right there at Birch and South Bristol. We've got money in for the Seminole Slough dredging. We've started the process of the design and getting the testing going and hopefully move that into the dredging stage. And then we also have various grant monies for turf replacement, irrigation retrofits, and other water conservation measures and controls.
Dave, is that Santa Ana-Dell High Regional Project, is that the one the Irvine Company's contributing money to?
That's correct.
And defend the bay.
Moving into our water system, not a whole lot. We've got $6 million program this year. We do have the Newport Boulevard Water Main, that's the main line that runs down the peninsula that needs rehabilitating and we wanted to do that before we get in there and do the widening and the rehab of the pavement right there at 32nd Street. We have more well rehabs out of the four wells. We've been doing the one this year, but we've got to do some work on the other three wells. And then we have our communication system. SCADA is basically the phrase that is the communication for all our devices from our wells back to our systems. It tells us how things are running, how they're operating. We use that for our sewer pump stations, our wells, and our reservoirs. And then we have some master plan upgrades, a few more cast iron water main replacements. Unfortunately, they're over in Corona Del Mar towards Poppy that we have to take care of some old lines in that area. Wastewater, not a lot of contributions this year. We've been doing pretty good on wastewater and having it in a pretty good shape. We do have one project up in St. James off Dover there. We have to correct some problems with the existing facilities. And then there's some spot linings and sags and fixing we have to do on a small amount throughout the city. Under our miscellaneous category, we've got a couple of unique projects this year. We talked a little bit earlier, we want to add two entry signs. These will be arch signs. This one here would be over or by the Marine Avenue Bridge coming onto Baboa Island. And the other one we're looking at, the Baboa Village folks wanted to have one coming into Baboa Village, so we're looking at constructing those and trying to get those installed this year. There's also money in here for the local program, excuse me, local coastal program element and the Arts and Culture Master Plan that the other departments will be using for that. But coming in a summary of that, quite a lot of projects. This kind of breaks it down by category and percentages and you can see we have $61.7 million and how it's broken down there. If you want some more details on that, rebudgets and new budgets. And then we also break that down by category, if folks are interested in how the money's being spent and how it's being applied. And we have one other way to break it down by funding source and you can see where the general funds contributing or the water fund, major facilities, gas tax, where some of the revenues are coming to pay for these projects. And then, lastly, that brings us to the good news because we continue to put $5 million of general fund into the system, improving our infrastructure. You're seeing that the neighborhoods are being approved and beautified. You're seeing lots of parks being added and upgraded and our pavement index is climbing, our city streets are getting better. Capital investment in Huntington Harbor, there's significant investment, I'm sorry, Newport Harbor. Getting a little parched here. It's hard to word. And then the traffic signal-
We weren't going to talk about that acquisition tonight.
I still like Huntington Beach. Even those better. Traffic signal synchronization, the final phases, as Councilmember Dagel mentioned, we're just at the end of that. And then facilities being rehabbed and re-modernized and replaced. Good news all around. I think that's spread out throughout the city. You're seeing it and I've had several people comment about how much constructions around town. There is a lot. There's a lot of private development, but there's a lot of public development too and you're starting to see the fruits of those efforts. The next slide here is one thing we talked about last time and I need a little more direction on. This is the landscaping along MacArthur Boulevard, along Big Canyon, that Councilmember Hill brought up, Mayor Hill. And we looked at it last time, we thought it'd be about a $500,000 project. We went back and looked at it and we're looking at just the slope now, to do the slope along there and not the whole entire amount. It's about 143,000 square feet of unimproved area, which is a cost of about $290,000. We did talk to folks from Big Canyon and they're looking at maybe even dedicating this property to us. They're looking at maybe doing some facility maintenance yard or something back behind there. So there's probably some cooperation we can work with them on and move something forward if council so desires. There would be one note I mentioned, I'm sorry, on the funding of this too, it'd be general fund and I talked to Mr. Kiff about this. We're trying to hold the $5.2 million, but on the other hand, we put a lot of money into the alleys in Newport Heights and the concern we have in talking to Councilmember Petros is there's some undergrounding districts forming up there. So we may want to delay some of that, so we may have a little revenue there that we could shift over and put into this project.
I suggested this in our last meeting. We spent quite a bit of money landscaping the excess freeway right away on the east side of MacArthur Boulevard adjacent to the port streets. And this is kind of the last little segment in there that needs, I guess it's not so little, but the last segment that needs landscaped. So I think the idea is just to go to the top of the slope and only landscape from the top of the slope down. Anything on the other side would remain with Big Canyon and their responsibility, whether it's maintenance or whatever they're going to do with it.
So from the top of the slope to MacArthur as city or is it the, belong to the association?
It belongs to the golf club, but I'm told they're willing to dedicate it to the city.
Okay.
So with that, I'd open up to any questions you have or thoughts.
Any further comments or questions?
Well, other than to just note my support for this MacArthur Boulevard slope landscaping to get that included in it.
I'd like to go back to my earlier question. So if I'm looking to find out where in the tidelines either revenues or expenditures the special category is, how do I find it?
Well, let us pull that out separately. I think that's a good suggestion. We can bring that back to you in two weeks and provide that to you and to the public as a document that shows what goes into operations and what goes into capital.
All right, thank you. On the Big Canyon one, so long as everyone to dedicate that, I can certainly go along with it. It really is an eyesore as you go down MacArthur.
You know, following up on Councilmember Gardner's comment about this, about this capital fund, Dave, I want to make sure that, you know, I think we did make a commitment that when we raised these pier fees, that we would make sure that we could show how the increment from those fees that were raised would be spent in the harbor. And so we just want to make that connection there. The increment that we raised and how that's being spent in the harbor.
Okay, I appreciate that. Jamie is pointing out that on, at least in the CIP document, on the page, it's towards the back, it's listing by fund and there's a, the bottom says Funding One and Funding Two. Actually, turn to page Funding Two, it does show the capital expenditures planned from the Baboa Island seawalls to the Marina Public, Baboa Marina Public Pier and the Central Avenue Public Pier.
Right, but it doesn't show that distinction.
Okay, so-
Even if you, it may just be a matter that you need to, that we need to put some asterisks in there as far as this percentage or something, whatever.
It's a good suggestion, thank you.
And to the point on the MacArthur slope, I'm fine with moving forward with that and also at the expense of carrying the costs of the alleys this year, given the undergrounding districts, with the knowledge though that that gets picked up in the next year. A little horse trading, I understand, but that's real important to the folks that are up in the heights. Other thoughts, Dave, that I just want to make sure aren't lost in this? You did race through this. That signal synchronization and modernization plan is significant for a number of reasons, which I'm sure my colleagues all know. One of the most significant is the capacity enhancements that it provides at a low cost without any additional right-of-way. We're not adding any lanes, we're not taking any other property, and yet we're eking out anywhere from research shows 5% to 15% capacity on the existing system. That's significant. That's significant for the motoring public. The other thing that I note in-
I can ask you a question, how does that get factored into our traffic model then? So that actually shows up in the model?
Well, it doesn't and we can have that one offline. The other thing that I find just great is that the use and seeking out competitive funds from OCTA seems to have gone up three times in this budget, from about $2.4 million to over $6 million. So kudos to you and your staff for trying to be competitive in a very competitive grant funding world and getting those funds so that we can do this for the benefit of our residents using regional fees. That is, that is, really should be noted, so thank you.
Well, one area too with OCTA that they're going to get into more and more in the future is the cycling. And they, their forum in Irvine, they talk specifically about PCH and putting some money into that.
Further comments or questions?
So if you do have a moment to put on your thinking cap either now or to send me an email individually if you, if you were interested in seeing anything covered in a little bit more detail next time or, you know, we also have the concept of the checklist and some of those are already things that Mr. Selich has talked about, so I don't know if there are items that we've missed that you'd like us to look at, although, you know, we did set up the budget so it's balanced quite closely, effectively but closely. So that's your opportunity to have us discuss that next time. We'll also, as Dan noted, talk about the special event requests that have come in and how we prioritize those for your recommendation, as a recommendation.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this study session item? If so, please come forward.
Bernie Falstad, Chairman of Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District. As Ed Rush, as Rush Hill knows and Ed Selich, we started on the entry project about three years ago and Rush said, oh, this will be a slam dunk. We'll get this done and we'll really show how the vision process is going to work. And then they went to West Newport and Peninsula, et cetera. We obviously got bogged down. The, Dave, our Public Works Director just mentioned that that project is in the budget, but it's not budgeted. So I don't know if you caught that, but the bid doesn't have $350,000 to this project, so I think the council will have to decide whether they want to do this project or not. Bid is offered to contribute 10% or $35,000 toward this project, so I think the council needs to make a decision on what it wants to do with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Hill, it's just a clarification on that. I want to make sure that it's understood, the Corona Del Mar entry was not relegated at the expense of West Newport projects. It was put on hold until issues related to parking in that area were addressed. So please don't think that this was something where West Newport benefited over Corona Del Mar or we're pitting one neighborhood against another. That is simply not the case.
Thank you.
Mayor Hill and members of the City Council, my name is Jim Mosher. It's difficult to comment on 90 minutes of commentary and nearly 600 pages of budget documents in three minutes, but I wanted to try to make three comments. The first thing I'd like to comment on is the continuing opacity of the detail part of the budget, which is the largest of the three rather daunting documents that the city manager referred to and the public sees on the website. When looks, when one looks through the line items of those for the various departments, I don't know if the council is as puzzled as the public is, looking at lines that just say professional services and you see $600,000 for this in one division, $400,000 in another, and the latest incarnation of the budget detail, actually the titles of some of the line items are chopped off, so you just say services admin something and you don't even know what the line item is and there's a few hundred thousand dollars for this or that. I'm sure the city staff, like a homeowner in preparing the budget, has put careful thought into why it needs those allocations of money for each department. And you would think in this electronic age that the public could be provided and the council access if they wanted to see in a particular department what those amounts were being budgeted for. Currently, it's completely opaque to the public. Some of those things, like the few hundred thousand here and there for professional services, I think are going towards, but I'm not sure, hiring the many consultants the public or the city staff has backing it up now. And that was my second point, to point out that while we see a reduction in the size of our city staff, there's been an explosion in the number of consultants and other people working behind the scenes for the city staff. Dave Webb's slide showed in his department alone, we've added something like 200 consulting agreements over the last few years. And good as those people may be, they're not like city employees sworn to uphold California Constitution and by and large, they don't have to provide financial disclosure of possible conflicts. Timer is not working, so I don't know quite where I am in my timing here.
That was bothering me also, but continue.
The third point I wanted, third and final point I wanted to make is about the slide we saw, about the conservative debt level that our city has. And I believe the slide showed that the debt service that we currently have is about 5% of the budget, which sounds fairly innocuous. Point I wanted to make is the reason we've incurred debt is to finance facility replacements in our city. And looking through the facility finance plan that we saw at the Finance Committee meeting, I tried to average the city's estimates for this budget year and the following nine, a 10-year period of how much we're planning to spend- a 10-year period, of how much we're planning to spend on facilities replacement. It's about $3 million a year, and during each of those 10 years, we will be paying about $8 million in interest on the debt that we acquired previously. So when you compare, that means while we're spending $3 million a year on average, we are paying several times more than that on interest, which perhaps means it's not quite as painless as we thought it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public like to comment on the study session item?
I had a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor, in response to what Mr. Mosher noted. I don't want to leave the public with the impression that the line item that covers professional and technical services means consultants. To me, that means someone whispering in someone else's ear telling people what to do. Well, these are really people like plan checkers. They'll, they'll take plans that when we have a high volume, and they'll, they'll work at them at their own office, and these are professional firms. Same thing with building inspectors. If we have too much going on, we will hire private sector building inspectors to do that work. What Dave's budget talks about is a lot of things like geotech advisors, that the city shouldn't have its own geotechnical person on staff, but it's perfectly appropriate to have a geotechnical individual or firm under those agreements. So, so don't be left with the impression these are consultants, quote-unquote. These are professional suppliers of professional services that I think do a really good job for us. And then finally, on the FFP, don't misstate what that is. That's a plan. It's not an intent to execute the entire thing. That plan is adjusted each year, so you can't look at today and make a broad assumption about 10 years from now as to what level of debt or interest will be paid on that plan. Thank you.
I would also follow up, comment that I grew up in real estate and recognized that long-term assets are paid with long-term debt. And there are probably, although, higher average in Newport than other communities, but I don't think everyone goes and buys their home for cash. And so we have a financing plan so that we can take our long-term assets and amortize them over a longer period of time. And also, we have the reserves so that the smaller projects, if you will, like the parks that we're building now, that we can pay for them in cash. But I don't know of anyone that pays for every one of their fixed assets in cash. With that, it's now time for public comments.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on study session, closed session, and regular meeting, agenda items, and also non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or agenda items. As a courtesy, please, please turn cell phones off, and I have to use the timer because the timer on the podiums is not currently working.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to offer public comments on any item that is not on one of our agendas this evening, or an item that we have on the agenda for closed session? Please come forward.
Thank you again, Mayor Hill and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher, and I'm sure this will take much less than three minutes. In the budget presentation, we heard a lot about the city's physical infrastructure, and as all of you know, cities increasingly have a digital infrastructure or presence on the internet that has both a financial aspect that you may or may not have heard about in the budget presentation, and also a policy aspect. And the thing I wanted to talk about is last night, I went to a very interesting presentation about a public workshop held by the city about possibilities for the West Newport Community Center. And at, at the meeting, the public was given and invited to visit a website that is apparently sponsored by the city called connectnewportbeach.com, where they could provide their input and thoughts on this project. While that's basically a good idea, the problem is, when the city has a proliferation of websites, which like some of our services, we're outsourcing to other people, it becomes difficult for the public to distinguish what is the authentic representation of the city and what is something else. And we're doing this increasingly, even now, our, our city agenda are kind of on a website that has a different address than the main city website. Our videos, we're at one sort of semi-offsite location, now they're at a sort of other one. We have a Visitors Bureau that has its own website logos that may or may not be representing the public viewpoint, and so on. So the policy aspect of it perhaps needs some attention from the City Council, and I wanted to remind you that we have two policies in your policy handbook. One is Policy D5 about the city's website itself, which has not been reviewed for the last five years. And you also have a policy on social media called Policy D6, and this would certainly be a social media outreach that the city is making. But if you look at that Policy D6, you'll see it's never actually been presented to the City Council, reviewed, or approved by you, and perhaps we're needing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment at this point in time? Seeing none, then we will conclude the study session, and we will proceed to closed-door session. I assume we have a closed-door session today?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hill. The City Council adjourned closed session to discuss agenda items from A through C, including meeting with labor, I'm sorry, meeting with negotiators Dave Kiff and Terry Cassidy regarding labor negotiations with all representative employees, meeting with real property negotiator Dave Kiff regarding the potential lease to explore ocean of the parking lot at 608 East Babo Boulevard and 2009 Washington Street here in Newport Beach, and meeting with legal counsel regarding one item of anticipated litigation. Thank you, Mayor Hill.
Thank you. We'll stand adjourned until 7:00 PM. Thank you.